Would you please do a roll call, Mrs. Sims?
Yes. Ms. DiDomenico?
Present.
Ms. Foster?
Present.
Mr. Helderly?
Present.
Mr. Nagler?
Present.
Mr. Lesniak?
Here.
Ms. Sims is here. And Ms. Allman?
Here. Thank you. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Lisle 202 mission statement is to provide our learning community with the essential education, skills, and experiences for future success. And we'll keep those thoughts in mind as we meet this evening. Item four on the agenda is public comment, and we do have a card from Diane Myrna if you would like to come to the podium to address administrative issues.
Good evening. As I said, my name is Diane Myrna, and I have lived in Lisle for 48 years. I was at the last meeting, and I did bring up that I was hoping you would not add more administrative staff. You did go ahead and do that anyway. But I also requested a meeting with Pam Allman, and I just wanted to report to the board that Pam has been very attentive to me and has followed up. And we will have a meeting tomorrow night with Dr. Philippiac and Pam. So I appreciate that. And the only other thing that I wanted to say, I did a little more research, and I did find that all the administrators, their salaries are adding up to about $2,383,000. So one of the things that I would like to discuss tomorrow night is what exactly the administrators are doing for that money.
Okay. Thank you, Diane. We'll be sure to address that tomorrow. Okay. Were there any comments submitted online this evening? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to item five, which is our action items. Before we go through those, would anyone like anything polled? Okay. Otherwise, we have item 5A, which is a consent agenda. Item 5A1, which is our board meeting minutes. 5A2, payroll pay orders. 5A3, vendor pay orders. 5A4, personnel. 5A4A, certified employment. 5A4B, classified employment. 5A4C, classified retirement. 5A4D, extra duty employment. And 5A4E, extra duty resignation. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. We'll need a roll call, and that was Mr. Helderly and Mr. Nagler.
Okay. Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Mr. Nagler?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. DiDomenico?
Aye.
Mr. Lesniak?
Aye.
Ms. Sims is an aye. And Ms. Allman?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Sims. Item six is a financial information, and the board acknowledges receipt of the following reports, 6A Financial Report and 6B Treasury Report. Were there any additional questions that anyone had on those reports? Okay. Brings us to item seven, then, which is our discussion items. The first is Policy Press 116 for first reading.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for getting your feedback and questions. So we'll start with Policy 2:260 Uniform Grievance Procedure. We had four board members. You will be able to find this in board books. We uploaded it earlier today with everybody's comment and the administration's responses. For the 2:260, we had four members or board members indicate accept changes as presented. We did have one board member indicating that they were not comfortable taking the sentence out of the first paragraph of page three. And that's where it reads, "If the complainant is a student under 18 years of age, the complainant manager will notify his or her parents, guardians, that may attend any investigatory meetings in which the child is involved." The board believes it's important for the parents to help advocate for the child as needed. Administration's response was, "As an FYI, required parent notification for each alleged occurrence could delay the investigation process." So they have any discussion on that?
So I was the person who had a concern with that, and I have since talked to Linda, and she explained why. That would be, I guess, it would make it harder because it would be time-sensitive. And it's not that the kids wouldn't be advocated for. It's that they used to require you to have written notice for that kind of thing, and now it's done orally. And so it doesn't necessarily mean that they're having meetings with kids without parents present. It's that they can notify people, like the authorities, or if needed, or ask the kid, you know, what happened. And so it sounds okay now that I heard about it.
Thanks for the additional context. Also, one board member pointed out that the address in that section is still our address on Central, and the administration indicated that they will be updating it in all policies that have our Central Avenue address. So any other discussions on this? With that, the decision will accept changes as presented plus the address change. All good?
Good.
All right. Moving on to Policy 5:100 Staff Development Program. We had four board members indicate accept changes as presented. We had one question about, "Some of the included services may benefit from more than once every five-year rotation. Has that been considered?" Administration's response, "Some trainings are more frequent than every five years, as some are annual, some biannual, et cetera. These changes are a result of a recent review of all the mandated training requirements, including the frequency of the training. The review group included teachers, administrators, health professionals, and state personnel who felt that the updated schedule, as noted in this policy, was appropriate. Please advise the board would like something else." Any further discussion on that question?
Yeah, that was my question, just to clarify. Like, some of the health ones, like the anaphylaxis administration, should we differentiate if those aren't every five years? I'm just thinking if there's an event, and there's like, just like, a challenge in the response, and we're only holding ourselves to a five-year standard. It was, you know, I think that some of the, are those being done more frequently than five years?
Absolutely. Some of them have the response that are annual for example. Some are every five years. It was something that was becoming extremely cumbersome.
Microphone.
To have to complete these trainings every year. And so there was a large study group that was done with teachers, administrators, policymakers, just to streamline the process. And some of them are, as I said, anaphylactic is annual, asthma is annual. There are still some that are annual.
Should we differentiate in the policy which ones, because I'll just say within five years. I just, if we were to have an event, and there was like, a delay in response, and they said, "Well, I don't know the last time I had the training. I know you would have training records, but we're only holding it to an every-five-year rotation." Should we hold it to the rotation we're doing?
During the press webinar on this, they intentionally left it broad because the frequency often changes based on a new mandate, or the timing of it may change based on, as policies change, for example, Title IX. So it was left intentionally vague, as in they're required in the press policy. If we want them to state how often they're done, I can do that. I mean, here's the packet of mandated trainings.
I was looking for that, Linda. I know you presented that. Was it last year or the year before? I don't know that the newer board members have that, but it is, what, probably 20, 25 pages at least of all the mandated. The one thing, and this might go to what you're saying, Kate, anytime there's a change, that training, that is incorporated into the training, and that is provided then to staff?
What is given to the board every year around September, I believe, it's on the board calendar, is a summary of the professional development that has occurred, the trainings such as GCN, staff, or summer curriculum, things like that. So I do provide a report to the board. Additionally, in your notes, you'll see that board members have access to GCN, and you can view any of the trainings that you can, that you want to see on that list. You can view the script. You can actually watch the training. You have access to all of that if you would like.
Yeah. And I'm, with the content of it, I'm just wondering what everyone's thoughts are. Like Linda was saying, if we have, like, most of these in Section 1 would probably be something that we would want to do every one to two years, would be best practice?
I guess my feeling initially is I would go with what's the mandated rules on, only because I think it's important, Linda, maybe to share that. There are so many of them. I mean, the more we, I'm not sure that they benefit from it, in other words, because there are so many mandated trainings. And so I, that's my feeling, is I would stay with the order as outlined here, that they're presented or that they're required. Anyone else?
I was going to say, given the extensiveness of the list there, if maybe you just redistribute that again for all of us?
Sure.
And we can review it, and then maybe as a topic for future, we can go through to see if, we don't want to make it overly burdensome for administration, keep track of, you already have 25 pages there, and you already have a rigor and cycle that you go through for it all.
Yeah.
So I think to try and incorporate that, just seeing it now into a policy, might make the policy itself more cumbersome and the administration of that. So maybe we could go through that and see if we want to make that decision.
And individual policies have individual requirements for some of the training, too, that we try to reflect, which is on, you know, we've added those now to the board planning calendar as reminders to make sure that those are met, so.
Yeah, I think the policy allows for flexibility with the trainings. It's just been my experience that every year I go through that cycle twice. And there are some standards in there, but every so often, there's a new, new training that pops up. So I think, yeah, it just gives enough wiggle room to add and add new things and take out other things as mandates come down the pike.
And my concern was, like I said, just on that Section 1, which was the health conditions, just the rest of them. I know a lot of these seem like they do have some more flexibility, but this sort of, it's like hands-on training for people who don't have hands-on these skills on a regular basis. So I just want to make sure we're holding ourselves to a standard that people are learning them all the time, because if one of the teachers or staff have to use one of these skills in the moment, like, if they're fumbling back in their memory, like, how do I use this, or how do I do it, it just could delay, you know, the response that's needed in those moments.
Perhaps for that particular section, under health conditions, if it is every year, we could just state that in the overall, that's on page seven of 23, health conditions of students, including but not limited to training on. And we could add something in there if, for the ones that are yearly rather than five years, whether it be an asterisk or just an indicated. That might help. I mean, that would at least say it's, those are more frequent than five years. And that's already what's presented, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I guess one thing to keep in mind, too, is, you know, our teachers aren't necessarily health professionals, and so the training is really just meant to expose them to the information. I think it would be difficult to ask a teacher to help a student with, for example, a compound fracture or something like that. You would just immediately get support, whether it was a nurse or an administrator in the, in the building. So I also like the frequency that it currently has in the policy and in the guidelines that I will send you. And it's been, it was a nice change to see this over having 29 tutorials every single year, because it's, it can take 12 to 15 hours to complete them. And so it was really, as I said, cumbersome for teachers to get this done. And I see a couple heads over there nodding because they live it as well.
Can I clarify, Linda, though? Is that, but this section, Section 1, is that being done more frequently, or is that still being done, like you said, more spread out?
Let me get to the, let's see. I just want to see what Section 1 is.
It's page seven of 23.
Oh, the health conditions for students, that is a once every five year, as it's, but as you look through that, like, anaphylactic is every year. Management of asthma is every year. Seizure recognition is, I don't think that one's every year. I have to look at my list, to be honest with you. But that whole section, some of those are annual, some of those are biannual, some of those might be five years.
Yeah. I just, I would be concerned that if a child was with a teacher, like you said, they're not clinical, they don't have hands on this every day, and they have an anaphylactic, it's probably going to be a teacher that's alone with a child, right? They're going to be the employee from 202 that's going to be with them if they have an anaphylactic reaction, and they've got to go grab the EpiPen and do all that. I just want to make sure we set our team up for success, and they're in that room, because what a scary position for a teacher to be in, like, that they feel confident, comfortable, able to recognize, able to intervene. And like, I think having those on a more regular basis will just provide them to feel comfortable. And those are, these are usually pretty quick trainings, I would think.
The thing, maybe I should clarify, too, is we wouldn't ask a teacher to administer an EpiPen. That would be a nurse.
That would be a nurse, but they would know to recognize it and contact the nurse?
Yes.
So they wouldn't be doing that? They wouldn't be the management of asthma symptoms? They wouldn't be giving, they'd be waiting for the nurse?
As a general rule, if a student has an asthma action plan, which many of them do, the teacher is absolutely made aware of that, and they're, they receive it, they have the information, but they're generally not the one administering any kind of care. Obviously, kids now can carry their inhalers, they can carry their, I don't know if they can carry their EpiPen, but they can, they can have their inhalers, which was a huge change a few years back and super needed in schools. So the teacher may be there to support, but they're not providing any medical care. So the teacher knows the action plan, they see it, they see a sign or are concerned. They absolutely call the nurse. And we have two at the elementary, one at the middle school, one at the high school. So they're aware of the plan and know what to look for.
Just a question for clarification. The training, I imagine for CPR, is like the sort of hands-on training?
Absolutely.
And the EpiPen and anaphylactic, students with diabetes, other health conditions, is like a GCN module?
If it is a diabetes training, we do have the module, but the nurses also work with the teachers directly in recognizing symptoms, what to do, that kind of plan. They would also have an emergency plan if a student is diabetic. So the teacher absolutely is aware of the diabetic plan and what, again, what to look for and what to, when to call for help.
And when the teachers get those plans, I imagine they get their rosters, they get the plans, or IEPs, or whatever other documents the students need, do they receive the training then, in addition to, like, what would be on a GCN, like, from the nurse?
For example, the diabetes training is if you have a child in your class with diabetes. It is not given to all teachers, just the teacher or the aide that might be in that room to help recognize. So they are given specific training.
The nurses in that, if you remember, remember that, the anaphylactic board policy, I mean, we have one specific to that because we talked about that one considerably. And I believe that for the healthcare providers, the nurses, that is a requirement in there every year. I mean, I'd have to double check. I'm sure it's cross-referred at the bottom. So for those specific providers, it's yearly. For the teachers, it's probably more routinely, and then as needed.
And again, when we have these higher level or chronic health conditions, we do have those action plans, and we have those emergency procedures in place. We know who those kids are. The nurses know, the teachers know, the admin knows. So there, it's very well-communicated if someone's allergic to bees, or if they have diabetes. I mean, it's, or even something more significant.
Kate, I interrupted you before, so go ahead.
Oh, yeah. I was going to say, when you were answering the question about diabetes, is that, like, do we need to call out that separate, that they get additional training?
It's in here.
Oh, it's in there. I'm just saying, this appears like everyone gets basics of diabetes care every five years. But if they have a student that's diabetic, you're saying they get an additional training plan?
Yes.
Do we need to call that, so everyone gets the basics every five years?
For diabetes, not everybody gets basic diabetes.
But this is saying everybody gets it in here, the way I'm reading this. This reads that everyone gets it. So if we're not giving it to everyone, we need to change this, how it's worded in the policy.
Does, Linda, I think maybe we're, everybody gets the basics every five years, but teachers with a student get it at the time they get their roster?
Let me double check. It is required annually for anybody, obviously, that has a student with diabetes. And then I will have to confirm if it's part of the five-year training.
Yeah, because it, I think it does say, yes, it does. It's under five, or it's under number 1E.
It has to be.
Five years, yeah.
Everybody gets it at least once every five years?
I do like that it says that it's every five years unless required more frequently by state or federal law. And I feel that that covers that, so that the ones that are done more frequently are done because of regulations.
I think we need to do a little bit more homework on this one. So this is the first reading. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. We'll find out all few specific to students and bring it back to make sure whatever's in our board policy is what we do in practice.
And it is every five years. Thank you for giving me a minute to look.
Okay. That sounds good. Okay, go ahead.
So this one will keep open until second reading, then? Okay. Moving on to, I actually have a question. Should gym teachers receive concussion training? PE and coaches are CPR, first aid, concussion, and AED trained? I also had a question from the board, for board member, for will we be able to have a presentation of some of the content of these required trainings in the future? Administration has also indicated tonight that the board has access to the GCN training tutorials. One other question on page seven, item 1A, realizing this is not legally required at the point of staff to receive training on chronic illnesses of students, but do we train on staff on how to spot and deal with chronic illnesses, issues like POTS, juvenile arthritis, or other inflammatory, health conditions which are chronic and can impact student learnings? Administration has replied, "Staff do not receive training on chronic health conditions."
Do receive.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Staff does receive training on chronic health conditions, but not on identifying symptoms of helping diagnose, but rather the educational services afforded to these students. Any other discussion on this item?
Can I go back on the diabetes quickly? In the policy notes from Illinois State Board of Education, the only people that are required to have the annual training are delegated care aides. So I almost have more of a concern with the way the policy is written, and it seems to be, to indicate that everyone should have that, but it is for delegated care aides. Most of our staff have had the diabetes training because it was left over from last year, and it falls within their five-year cycle. But according to the new information, it is only required for delegated care aides to have the specific training.
So this reads the basics of diabetes care. So I don't know. I guess what we'd need to clarify is, are the two the same?
Yeah, there's no other information on diabetes in this packet, so it seems to be different than what's in the policy.
So are we going to bring that back for clarification next time, or?
We'll do a little research. We'll talk to press. We'll talk to our attorneys. We'll look at what's required, and so we'll bring it back for the next month with a recommendation that aligns with what the requirements are.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So I'm going to, we'll keep it open until the administration comes back. Great.
Oh, Dan, can I just elaborate on that concussion training question? On section, additional training or requirement, section four about the concussions, and I did see the answer in there, but this section four, the following individuals must complete concussion training, is coaches, assistant coaches, nurses, licensed and nonlicensed healthcare professionals serving on the concussion oversight team, and then you're, so gym teachers don't have to get it?
They do. We have our gym teachers take the training, so they are certified every other year.
Should we add gym teachers in there?
You can.
Yeah. I just think, I love that you have them taking the training. I think that's a good idea, so.
Seems good.
All right. Anything else? Great. Moving on to 7:20, harassment of students prohibited. Four board members indicate to accept changes as presented. We do have some questions to the administration. The address will be updated, as earlier mentioned, on the other policy for, such as formatting, punctuation, and grammar changes. Under, on page 13 of 23, under anonymous reporting, for some reason, the full address for the link did not print, but the administration said it worked for them, so it might be just some sort of...
It did. When I tried it, the link works, but it's just, I don't know why in the policy it's not printing fully. So, but it works. I'm sure it's just a matter of the printing somehow.
A PDF issue. Okay. And the other thing, under the investigation process, first paragraph, are the consequences of failing to promptly comply emphasized with all employees. Same for the consequences of employees who fail to complete or forward a report under board policy 2:265, Title IX Grievance Procedures. Below page 19, making a report, second paragraph. Administration has replied yes to both, and reminders will be sent.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. So for this, so you accept changes as presented plus the address change?
Yes, because the address, or the, yes.
All right. Onto Policy 7:185, teen dating violence prohibited. Five board members accept changes permitted. All agree? Okay. Note of that. All right. The last policy, Policy 2:265, Title IX Grievance Procedure. I think three board members indicated accept changes presented. One board member went to discuss this matter further. We had, under suggested formatting changes, under, on page 18 of 23, under the Title IX Discrimination prohibited, second paragraph, the wording for one seems awkward. Consider adding a comma after activity and before explicitly. I'm fine with that. I'm going to take a quick read. Okay. Under questions for administration, three board members had the same question for inserting the name of the Title IX coordinators. That's, obviously, we'll add that. On page 21 or 23, as referenced under Press Plus 1, third bullet, does our district use a single investigator slash decision-maker template? Administration has responded currently. General is the investigator, and Lynda Cattolick is the decision-maker. The investigator prepares a proposed decision, and decision-maker confirms. In the administration's opinion, it makes sense to collaborate on such an important process. That said, we may change in the future if the process becomes too cumbersome. For press plus two, do we predominantly prominently display the title nine notice on the website and in each handbook? It's on the website and in the district handbook. Question on page eighteen, with regards to complaint means an oral or written request to the district that objectively can be understood, et cetera. How are oral complaints handled? Most complaints come in to admin in verbal form as the first step. From there, the record keeping process begins on our end. The complaints that reach the level of title nine or uniform grievance, admin has administrative procedure to follow regarding steps, communicate, et cetera. The, also, the board member asked, the other language in the policy references a report filled out in case the oral complaint, who fills out the report is an obligation to title nine coordinator. The complaint managers principals would begin the report. And one board member asked, do we comply with these instructions? And administration replied, yes. So those are all the questions. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, so I think we're looking at accept changes as presented plus the comma.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Dan.
And everybody's still awake in the audience. That's good.
Yes, it's good. It was a short one.
Short and sweet, we'll see.
All right, item seven B is enrollment per building and grade level. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Filippiak.
All right. This is the first time I'll be presenting up there, and I do believe you have screens in front of you, so hopefully all goes well. Are you able to see on screens in front of you?
Yes.
This is the same information you have in your board packet. I apologize for the delay. It was a little bit more time consuming than I originally had thought. But I do think these are formats that you haven't seen before. And I do think it's important to go to this level of detail, just so you're familiar about all the moving parts. So the first sheet that we have up here is total student enrollment. We have the current year and then we have the last two years. Some things I'd like to point out is back when we were in 2023, we started to see a jump in terms of the number of students, particularly at the elementary level. And so we were worried about, is this the new trend? You know, will we have enough room at that building? What should we prepare for? And so the following year, which was last school year, these are just kind of ranges I put into place, but I felt like a small class size was 100. I felt like a medium was 100 to 120, and then it really gets to be large when you have over 120. But those, those are at least where we currently stand now and looking at the last few years. And so when we looked at last year, we had a pretty large class in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade. And so that's where we really had to move from what was five sections up to six. And we wanted to know, okay, is this the new norm that we need to prepare for? We had 1,490 students, which is that 23, 24 in regular ed. That only went up by three in the current year. And so it looks as though our number of kindergarteners dropped off a little bit. It went from having 119. The new group is only 99. First grade, we had 124. That went down to 115. So we don't know if it's a bubble. We don't know if this is a trend that we experienced going up and now it's going to start to go down. But we definitely want to share this with you each and every year so you're familiar with. But as it stands now, we didn't see a big increase from in enrollment. Some of the other things we'd like to highlight, to the left is what we're calling in-house. And so those are students that we're able to have with us the entire day. And so the board was very supportive of having a self-contained program that what that typically means is students who probably wouldn't find success in the regular program, but probably their needs are not severe enough to go to a SACID or a private placement. I think it was about a decade ago, the board supported having a self-contained group that was rather small. I think we started with less than five students at the high school and found success. And so then we added it to the junior high a couple of years later. Then we added a small group to the elementary. And so very proud to say that for the upcoming year, because of your support, we have a self-contained program all the way from preschool all the way to 12th grade. And so there's no better feeling than a student being able to stay with their peers, all the people from their community and their neighborhood and not have to go to a separate placement. And so thank you for your support in allowing us to grow the program from basically zero up to 32. We talked a little bit earlier under the finance committee about how many students attend SACID, how many attend either a private placement. In some cases, we will utilize a neighboring school district. So it might still be a public school, but we still consider them to be a private placement, so they're included in the other. And so for the upcoming year, in terms of the SACID students, we went from 26 to 23 because I think a few of them came back to our program. And then in terms of the private placement, went from 29 to 30. And so, so those numbers are pretty stable. And even looking at last year, I think one of the questions in finance was, did we see a big increase or a change in the number? We had 55 students last year that did not attend in-house. And then we had 49 the previous year. And so when you saw the change in what we had spent, we had an additional six students come to us. Those are usually very expensive when we have them go to SACID or outplace. But I do think it was a combination of seeing a few more students. I think we're seeing an increase in the price. But whenever we put together the budget, we just don't know. And so we make sure that we include enough, just in case during the year, a certain number of students enroll. But the long and the short of, if looking just at this specific trend, I would say we're starting to flatten out in terms of enrollment. We're not seeing the big increases, particularly at the elementary that we expected. And so I think we're in a really good place starting the school year out. The next level of detail is looking at the actual buildings themselves. Again, we were very nervous about what was happening at Lyle Elementary, but you can see, this mouse is not playing very well. We had 779 students in-house at Lyle Elementary, and it actually went down by eight. And so still a very big number from the 630 when we originally opened the school, but currently at 77, not continuing to see the increase. Seeing slight increases at the junior high and high school, but going from five, 1,565 to 1,578, I would say is relatively flat. Moving on to a much more detailed sheet, for those of you who've been on the board for a while, this was a really big topic a few years ago. I should probably zoom in more, but hopefully you can still see. There is no magic number in terms of what your class size would be, but the board spent a lot of time analyzing this a number of years ago. A lot of community members came and spoke. And so those numbers on the left-hand side with the target, we really wanted to target in a perfect world to be able to have a preschool anywhere from 10 to 15 students, at kindergarten anywhere from 16 to 20, and so on and so forth, you can see. And so we do our best to try and stay within that target area, which is often only about three kids from the low to the high, so it's kind of hard to nail that. But you can see, based on the current enrollment and the number of sections that we have, we're right at that low slash target. So preschool, nine is the low, but the target is 10. We're off by one kid, or one student, I should say. The kindergarten, we're one student theoretically away from getting us to that green zone. So the zones are kind of tight. They don't always butt up to each other, but we really do feel like we're right at the high end of the low. And if we had actually decreased a section, it would have put us in the high in all of those cases. The only section that we're really nervous about is fifth grade. We would have loved to start the year with more in the area of a class size of 22. It's the last of all of the grades that only has five sections. I don't know, and with the magic wand and knowing what I know today, maybe it would have had one less kindergarten section, so go down to five and then put that towards fifth. But you just, you don't know with kindergarten until literally hours before the start of the year. And so I'd rather be looking at a number of 17, knowing it makes a huge impact for students who, this may very well be their first experience at school, than to have done the opposite. And then in terms of fifth grade, I mean, we have a solid team in all grades, but fifth grade, you know, they themselves are looking at that number, but it really all depends who makes up those 25 students as to whether that's an issue. But it's, we would never want to go more than 27. But it's definitely in that area that we'll be looking at to make sure if there need additional supports at fifth grade. But at this point, we wouldn't break that class up. This is the one that always, I feel like if you don't work at Westmont or Lyle, these numbers mean something very different than very large organizations. I think large organizations, my students went to Indian Prairie, they, very high class sizes typically at middle school and elementary, 30-plus. And even in high school, it often seemed like at least there wasn't 25 students. Typically, that course wasn't offered. But we're so small, we just don't have enough kids to pass around. And so by consolidating that and saying, okay, unless you have at least 20 kids in a class, we'd have to eliminate a lot of classes. And so I think one of the wonderful things of being at Lyle, Lyle in general, but even junior high and high school is, I think we have a really competitive catalog in terms of courses that we offer. I'm not going to go through the other two sheets, but I would suggest, if you haven't already, look at some of those class sizes. And there's some that are great courses and they may only have seven students. And so the board has been very supportive to be able to say, even though there's seven students, we still need to offer these types of courses. But those numbers in terms of having majority of your classes to have 10 to 20 students is on the low side. But on the flip side, if you wanted to have 21 or more, you would significantly have to cut your course catalog. So what that means overall, when you look at what we spend per pupil, that's often why it's higher. When you're a very large high school, like some of our neighbors, like Naperville North or Naperville Center or Wheaton Warrenville or Indian Prairie, they have very large high schools, and so they're able to cluster kids. When you're only spreading out, let's say 120 students, it's, it's, kind of comes down to simple math. And so we will continue to offer the courses. We will continue to leverage hard into the number of taking advantage of the low class sizes and be able to have some more conversational and meeting the needs of all students is easier when you have a class of less than 20 than when you're trying to struggle with, you know, somewhere in the area of 30. But we will continue to have these types of class sizes and lean into that being one of the uniquenesses of Lyle until we're told otherwise. Lot of information, a lot of numbers. And again, I apologize, I wasn't able to upload it until earlier today, but there's no decisions for today. But I did want you to understand, in terms of enrollment, we didn't see a spike. In terms of class sizes, it seems to align with what we've talked about in the past. In terms of why we spend more per pupil, if this is the labor involved and why it costs more for, Westmont is very similar to us because they have a very similar challenge in terms of offering a pure catalog competitive with our neighbors, but not have that many kids to spread out. And the other thing I skipped here, and I apologize, is if you might say, well, how close are we to running out of room at Lyle Elementary? We talked on the left about what the different targets are. We talked about our current enrollment. We talked about our current sections and where we fit in terms of our target. All these numbers are basically saying is if 96 more students enrolled tomorrow, we wouldn't have to hire any more teachers. So we have the capacity within our current staff and our current rooms for 96 more students. Now, they would all have to fall exactly within those grades. They couldn't all come in fifth grade. But even if we did have them all register in fifth grade, not necessarily 100, we do have the space for one more section for fifth grade. So our plan is, we'll look at this again close to a year from now. And if we continue to see the fifth grade being a large group and we haven't lost kids in other grades, we do have a plan, which is the second art room would become the sixth, fifth grade. And so that, what you see here, this 96 assumes that we don't increase the five sections at fifth grade. Current staff, current classrooms, you can handle 96 if they fall in those categories. If we see an increase in fifth grade, we will definitely add a sixth section and that will give us even more capacity. Lots gone over today. Don't feel that you have to have all your questions tonight if you want to add it to a future board meeting, but hopefully the way it's color-coded, the level of detail you can see in-house, you can look at our trends, you can see the courses we offer. Sometimes our acronyms, I tried to explain when I could on an acronym, but more times than not, when you see the very small numbers, those are special ed students who are in our programs, or the board has been incredible to support some of our interventions. And so at your elementary building, you have two math interventionists, you have two reading interventionists, so that they can work with students every day exactly on what they're working on in that day and not wait till summer school. And you have, at the junior high, you have a math person and you have a reading person. And then at the high school, it's more the learning lions, to be able to have tutors available, to be able to stay during those embedded time periods. What do you need? Talk to a teacher. We'll help you now on a daily basis, a regular basis. Questions for tonight?
Yes, I noticed that for the junior high, it seems the predominant classes are small, look to be where the students that have the greatest needs. So a lot of, I noticed, and just eyeballing this tonight, the ESL, exploring math and reading, instructional math and reading seem to have the smallest sizes, but those also students have the greatest needs. And then the rest, there's a lot of greens in there and no colors, so.
So often it is actually based on the needs, so it's not like we only have a limited number of seats. Scheduling is sometimes an issue for those who've been on the board about three years ago. We struggled because the way the schedule is designed is maybe you needed a math support and a reading support, and the schedule only allowed one of the two. But the junior high has redesigned the schedule so that you can get both of those. In terms of English language support, we have Joanna at the junior high, and so she travels between, I think it's the high school then the junior high, based on the needs. And then, I don't know if we've talked about this, I'm trying to think of the last time we talked about this, but if you have more than 20 students who come from a home that predominantly speaks non-English, once you have more than 20, you actually need to provide some ESL services within the school day. I feel like we shared this, we hit that number at the junior high. I think we're at 21, 22 now. And so we found an incredible teacher, and they've put together a wonderful plan that they'll probably talk more about during their school improvement plan at the junior high, to have those teachers actually be in the classroom, working with those students, and then actually having some private time afterwards to say, how is it going? What can I do to support you? So I'm really confident to be able to share more about that. It's new to us. But that is another kind of low class size thing that you're talking about, Dan.
So it's more complexity of why those numbers are also where they're at.
Yeah, and in some cases, it seems more in the high school. There's just some great programs that maybe only six or seven kids can have an interest in. But other times this small is because of special ed interventions, things of that nature. The number I'm not excited about is algebra. At the junior high, we have 30 students, and I think it's up to 32 now because we just had a few register in the last few hours. But you run into that again, like, are you going to have a class size of 15 in 15? Or our target is to get to 40 students there, and then for sure, we'd have two sections, but currently it's running high. If the teacher tells us it's really hard to navigate this many students in algebra, we'll definitely find a plan B. But right now, we do have 30 students in a real core course that I think is incredible that we have at the eighth grade level.
So I did talk to that teacher because my son's in that class. And I went to the open house. It's at the junior high. It's like the eighth graders that are taking algebra, so they're like ahead or whatever. But I asked him, like, is it really difficult with 32 kids? I mean, in this room, like, there's just like so many desks. And I'm like, is it, does it get too loud? Like, are you doing okay with it? And he's like, no, everything's going fine. This group of kids is really good at paying attention and it's not really rowdy or anything. And they're doing, he thinks they'll do just fine. So it wasn't a concern for him.
That's great to hear, and that is probably the normal, what class sizes are outside of Lyle. And so it works at other schools. But in our tradition here of wanting to target somewhere closer to 25 for a class like that, it's a little bit higher than we want to be, caught off guard by the last three students, but not enough to split it at this point.
I think, you know, one thing to keep in mind, too, the class size and the smaller, some of the, some of the courses, more course offerings, the AP courses that we have, the targeted needs and interventions, that all, the board did support it, but it also came, not only for the teachers expressing needs, but it came from the community. You know, although we backed Division 202 where, and before that, as to, you know, 10 years ago, more than 10 years ago, in the last strategic plan before we went to the continuous improvement framework, the community wanted small class sizes. And that was one of the things they were proud of, and 24 was kind of the max on it. And then they wanted more AP courses. And then they wanted more AP courses because, to keep their kids, our kids competitive, especially when I went on to college. So, you know, we've, we've tried to honor that in, in supporting those things. The other thing, I appreciate you talking about the capacity at the elementary and that'll, I hopefully diffuse some of the concerns. I know last year before, when we did the Vision 202 at the elementary, that was one of the biggest concerns. And so we said we were watching, waiting and seeing, and so that fits into this, so thank you.
I also want to say thank you for the, the format for the elementary. That was, that was a very visual aid with the colors. What I do notice though is like for all the green one, like you look at from, you know, second grade last year, our third graders this year, almost, I think every green one in the twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four, after the red, grew by a few students. So we kind of go one line, eyeballing it. Just to note that the other grade, not just the red ones, are still growing to a degree. Onesie, twosie, threesie.
Right, right. Every year will be different.
You know, so even though we're looking at ninety-nine kindergarteners, who knows where that will go as they continue on our district and other people move into our district. Yeah, so, and I think only one red one went down. So I bought, again, I did some quick eyeballs, so.
Well, it, it goes to the fact that we are watching it closely or administration is.
I just look forward to look, you know, next year with this format, everything shifted left and the next one, watching that block of red go down the page and seeing how that goes.
We're in a really good place in terms of capacity. I think the board is very thoughtful and thinking to the future and making sure the junior high has the capacity as you see those reds push the junior high. I think we have the capacity at the high school based on the class sizes that you see are relatively low and the renovations that were done for a variety of reasons back in two thousand and two, so I think we're in a really good place in terms of capacity. But that being said, now that I said it out loud, maybe it'll be a lot more reds next year, we'll see.
And I know you touched on this a little bit earlier and I, I just want to say I do appreciate the format and the color coding. I think that's very nice and easy to read. But the kindergarten first grade, so what would be kind of the levers we would look at making a decision on going back to the five class sizes versus the six next year? Or I guess that would be first and second grade then for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So first and second grade is a lot easier because we know the parents, we reach out, hey, you haven't filled out the registration yet, are you still coming? So we have a handle on that. The kindergartners are the ones we just don't know. And so Jenna does a great job putting up signs, sending out emails, getting things advertised, but for whatever reason, a few weeks before the start of the school year, sometimes we have a big influx. Last year was an example of that. And then sometimes they just don't come, so it is hard to predict. But we will look at it, we will keep you in the loop as we start the school year. I'm just a little nervous about taking us back to five yet. Like, it, it just always, every year's different. And so we'll continue to talk about that come May and June and July of next year.
Yeah, but I think, I mean, if we stay at least relatively close, we've had class sizes at size, you know, you, you scroll up a bit in years past at five sessions and we, we did those well. So I know we've got some bigger ones in between, but yeah, it'd be interesting.
Yeah, we had a hundred and fourteen two years ago, kindergarteners, a hundred and nineteen last year, and all of a sudden we lost twenty. So that's an entire class.
And with, oh, go ahead.
No, no, Kate, you finish your thought.
Oh, no, I was just, with the, the capacity, you showed there about, how many kids typically arrive every school year?
You mean new to the school district?
Yeah, that showed that we could, like, include another ninety-six. I mean, is that?
So if tomorrow, I'll use kindergarten as an example, if twenty-one students, that's over there on the far right, if we still wanted to, if we wanted to stay in the green because we're currently in the blue, twenty-one students could register in kindergarten in the next week and we would not have to go beyond six and still be in the green. The next example would be seventeen first graders could register this next week, with six sections, we'd still be in the green. So, so often, it's like, oh, we, Keith, I thought you said we have room for ninety-six more students and not have to hire more staff. That's only true if they happen in those grades, our biggest fears. Whenever, excuse me, Jill says we have another student register, I go, please tell me not fifth grade, please tell me not fifth grade. And it wasn't fifth grade last year, it was a different grade. And so every year, there's always those ones that are close, but we have a lot of capacity with the exception of fifth grade, that if people would like to come to Lyle in the next few weeks, we have this, the teachers in place and could still stay in our target.
But are those numbers, is that what we typically see? Is that more? I mean, twenty-one kids showing up in one grade in one year feels like a lot to me. Is that more than we would typically, how many do we typically see come in during a school year?
I don't have that information and I'm not sure it's consistent year to year. Sometimes, often more students come than leave.
Okay.
But some years, it's very few and some years, something happens in the community and all of a sudden we get a bunch of students register and we're like, where are they all coming from?
So if I looked at this for second grade, you have three there. If five second graders showed up during the course of the year, that would turn yellow on your chart, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't have an answer to your question, Kate, and I'm not trying to.
You did.
I'm not trying to spin it, it's just, there isn't the trends you would hope there would be in the number of students who come and go at a particular grade at every given year. They seem to all have their own circumstances.
I thought one of the other interesting things, for whatever reason, under the student enrollment chart, if you want to go back to that, this will be one of our lowest graduating classes, but the juniors coming in next year will be the highest in, I'll say a decade if I, if I'm right in that, but in a long time, so.
Yeah, the graduation ceremony might go five minutes longer.
It might, and we have to prepare now. No, but it's, it's just interesting because it's like, you know, what happened that year? But just an observation. Okay, any, any other questions?
I do, and you probably, you may not have the answer for this one right now, so you can answer it in the future. I just didn't get a chance to go through these until a little later on today. Is there like a professional standard for like a class size, elementary for example? Like, is there something that you guys used to benchmark against to determine these numbers and compare it?
I'm going to sound like an economist and the answer is often, it depends. If you have a great teacher, it could be a high number and it's going to be a great, you know, great class. You might have a lot of students who are struggling or students with IEPs and the number should be lower because of that. It might have a lot to do with if it's a PE class or if it's an algebra class or if it's something in between. So when we designed these targets a few years ago, that's what we had found in the literature. And that seemed to align with what the community expected because there would be rumors that the classes were too high and we're like, it's twenty-four, what makes that too high? Go to one of our neighbors, they're in the thirties. But in a perfect world, if you had a great teacher and students who are ready to learn, these target numbers in the green is what you'll find in research in terms of how many students you want. But a perfect world doesn't exist and so there's a lot of variables that we definitely have to take into consideration that when a teacher says, I've got twenty-two kids in my class and I can't manage them, you get in the class and you see what else is going on because there can be other variables beyond just how many students are in seats. But these were all research-based, but you can find research to support any number you want. But a lot of our peers who are going to referendum, that's a big push, they want to get under thirty.
And so Kate, I think, yes, there is, there is data. And I remember we looked at, for many years, whenever they were going to add, even when elementary was achieved here, when they were going to add another classroom or not, we looked at the data along with what the community wanted. It, it is these targets, that's pretty much the standard. It goes up in, a little bit higher into third grade, but I think above four, or up to fourth at least, it was not over twenty-four.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure that we took that professional literature into account when we made those decisions.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
If you look at this later, I know you didn't have a lot of time to look at it, but we can always add it to a future agenda. If you have a very specific question, just give me a call, but you should have all the details in terms of all the courses and how many students are enrolled.
Great, thank you, Keith, I appreciate that. Okay, brings us to seven C, which is summary of the areas of focus for the districts and buildings for the current school year. And just as a little background, when we first started school improvement plans several years ago, we didn't have these areas of focus ahead of time and the board thought it would be really helpful to know because the school starts off right away on day one, administration is talking with the teachers about the areas of focus, but we don't see them until it comes into the school improvement plan. So these are in, in line with that to provide us with just an overview of some of the very specific things that they're talking about. And I saw some of the, a lot of, all the questions that came in and had excellent questions and I think it's really helpful for administration now to include our questions as they prepare their school improvement plans because oftentimes we have a lot of questions when we see the plans, but some of these, if they can target in on the plans, on the presentation rather, will be helpful to us. So with that overview, the, one other thing, if you look back at even last year's school improvement plans, you'll see in there areas of focus and then action plans that coincided. One example was, you know, the, the junior high pulled up that last year's and that's how they had it laid out, the areas of focus and then right next to it was their action plans in there. So, so I'll turn it over again to you, Keith.
The school improvement plans have definitely changed over the years and we have a different board than we did in years past. And so if you want something different, but what is important for us to do is follow the continuous improvement framework, which is all the research we did a number of years ago. It's important for us to be able to tell you what we plan to do, but also not forget about that a year later. And so the administrators will do a great job, I'm sure, be able to say, this was our plan last year, this is what we did and these were the results. And as what we have as new information, this is the plan for the year that we're about to start. We were fortunate that the high school over the years would give their presentation in August and then usually the junior high and elementary would do the following months, but with having half the administrators at the high school relatively new, there's trial, trying to learn names and putting together this presentation is, is not realistic for this meeting. And so knowing that we just got our IAR scores and that's a big part of what we want to talk about at the elementary and junior high level, we're going to try something different this year. This, I'm not saying is the new norm, but we'll have, at the September meeting, we'll have the elementary and the junior high. It might go a little bit longer, but I think that's better than pushing it off too far. And so we'll have the elementary and the junior high in September and then the high school will be ready for that October and you'll have all, hopefully, the information beyond just these five areas of focus. There's many more than this, but the board had directed us to kind of identify the top five. From a district, district perspective, this is what we were thinking would be our kind of big areas of focus for the upcoming year. We had done a, our first year for Vision 202 was in twenty fifteen-ish. We had over two hundred people, I believe, participate in that. And that wasn't to build our strategic plan, that was to kind of say, this is where we are, we need your help, what do you want us to focus on? And so in no way was it, this is what we plan to do. It was more like, hey, let us know, you know, where you think we should focus, if given choices, where are your priorities? And so we did that in twenty fifteen. And then in twenty sixteen, we had a very similar number of meetings, five meetings, where we looked at what we're going to do with the buildings. After that, almost every year, we've had some level Vision 202, maybe one meeting, one topic. Last year, we had more of, let's have a conversation with students, I think it was last year, was it parents year before, the years are all blur at this point. But knowing that it's been close to a decade and a lot of these parents didn't participate in that experience before, we feel like we're probably due to have one of those conversations. I often say, when I talk to other school districts, the beauty of our school district size is, we can actually invite every single person, we don't build a committee, we, you have a mailbox, you're invited. And we have a conversation with everybody who's willing to come and we're not telling you things that we could put in a newsletter, we're not telling you things that we would send out an email. This is truly wanting to get some answers to some questions. So I think in, in the next few months, I think as a board, you'll need to decide, you know, what are the types of things you want to know? You know, what are the big questions on your mind you would love to hear feedback on? And then you'll probably put together a committee, as you did in the past, of both board members and then community members and start to, the hardest work is to develop what the questions are because people are willing to come and give opinions. But if you don't have good questions that you sincerely want answers to, beyond just validating what you think, people will, will see right through it. So a lot of work related to it, but I do think it's a good time, having known that it was ten years ago-ish. The next area is technology. I think there's some positives and there's some negatives. I think at multiple board meetings, we've talked about our phones becoming a distraction, you know, how are they helping instruction? Should we just say no phones? I think whatever we do needs to be district-wide, but I do think it needs to come from similar conversations. Maybe it's part of Vision 202 as to what parents think, what students think, what teachers think, and see if we can come in a way that it either doesn't inhibit education and best case scenario maybe makes it even better, but it's not going to be a top-down decision. It really needs to be a conversation. I'm more excited about AI. I think this is my twenty-fifth year in education and when computers first came out, that was what was going to solve education and make everything easier, faster, and it did bring some benefits in terms of being able to do spreadsheets, write things, you know, getting feedback on things were spelled wrong and then the internet came out and then we're like, oh, gosh, you know, now it's all in one place. You don't have to memorize, you know, all the capitals, you could actually just go on, on your computer and the internet will tell you the answers to those things. I think our next phase was adaptive testing, like you see in iReady where students all take the test and it adapts based on your ability. I mean, a teacher having twenty-some students and having to differentiate is hard. Some of those assessments help you break out what those needs of the students are, but I think AI now is getting us to the level that it actually can work directly with students. I don't know how much you've seen in terms of either TED Talks or books or things on the news, but AI has really gotten to the point where it's a tutor now and it actually will be able to engage with a student. And so we always want to do differentiation, but I do think AI is going to be able to get us to that next level to actually have students work directly with AI to be able to make sure that we're not wasting their time, but they're actually not struggling because they can't keep up with the rest of the groups. So we're going to have to lean into that. I think it's the beginning stage, it's not like going to be a checkmark at the end of the year to say, okay, we did AI, now we're moving on to the next thing. I really think education's moving in that direction. We need to start playing with some things, we need to start trying some things and at some point, hopefully towards the latter part of the school year, we'll be able to share a lot of the learning, the things that we're doing to make it a great improvement and having like maybe one-on-one tutors, but also knowing that it comes with the scary things that like someone just Googles a paper on whatever and then cut and paste it and AI is really good at working with students to be able to show, this student didn't write like that in the past. This student didn't work on this for a few weeks, they did it all in a day. And so to be able to work with a teacher in terms of being able to make sure that people aren't taking credit for somebody else's work, it's always been a risk. You know, you could hire somebody to write your papers or have a friend do it, but it's much more accessible now, but I think AI is going to help us flush it out a lot better than we've done in the past. One of my pet projects is the utilization of, of data. We've made a, a lot of strides, I think in the last year, to be able to look at student data to figure out where they're growing, where their needs are. I think we need to continue to grow in those areas and so that's going to be a huge part of what I'm going to be working on with the individual schools. I think that the junior high, I don't know if you've had a chance to see the renovations, looks unfinished. It's kind of like if you ever started a, a project in your house and like, okay, when are you going to finish this? Great start, windows, air conditioning, the boardroom being trans, in central being transitioned into those four classrooms, the lighting, I mean, the rooms that had worked on, I think turned out really good, but when you walk the hall, it's like, when are they going to do the tile? When are they going to do the lights? When are they going to paint the lockers? Like, we just need to keep going through the next three stages of the renovations. And so Dave and I have a meeting with the construction managers and the architect this week to talk about, okay, how are we doing relative to the twenty million dollar budget? Do we have enough to continue to get through all through the phases? What are we going to focus on for next summer so that we can meet with you soon and give you an update? And if you agree with our recommendation, get it out on the street, which sounds weird that we're just starting the school year and already talking about bids for next summer, but we want to make sure that we get it out on the street and get as many people as possible bidding on our projects. bidding on our projects. And then finally, as much as I would have liked to put a checkmark next to the two collective bargaining agreements, we still have not settled the teachers' contract yet, and so we've been working on it for the last month and a half. We'll have information to update you during closed session on the teachers' contract, but the classified contract was only for one year. And so we have a contract with classified for this year, but we need to start earlier rather than later, so we're not rushed to be able to get hopefully a two-to-three-year contract on the classified staff. Any questions on those areas of focus? It's not the only focus, but those are the ones that we think are going to take the most time this year.
No, I'd say, great job on the junior high renovation. I think you took, well, Pam and I on a tour about eight weeks before start of school, and I had, my daughter was seventh grader, and she kept going, this is going to be done on time. And sure enough, you know, this week, she's coming in there, and everything, you know, from week, we could tell it all seemed to come together very well in time. I know there's a lot of probably punch list items still to go, but the school's fully functional from what we can see. Thank you.
Yeah, we could not be happier with the Pepper team that we got assigned this year. It was a different team than we had last time, but they really are quality organization. They set priorities, they made sure as we got to the end that we had groups working on weekends, double shifts, and they were confident, whether they were just pretending to be confident, I don't know, but they were confident, and they got it done. So as you said, there's still punch items here and there and little things that we need, but I think, you know, 99% of the work is where exactly it's supposed to be, and we kept it within budget. And so between being on budget and on time, I don't think you could ask for much more, but I think we just need to keep up the momentum, because I want it to be, in the end, a beautiful elementary that we have pride in, an incredible high school that was done in 2002 that has aged well. We just need to get that middle school to be that feeling of continuity and not the old building, but it was a great start for this year to get one-fourth of the work done.
From when we went down, Dr. Filipiak and I went July 30th, and from that time to the beginning of school, which was what, two weeks later, there was also significant improvement, but just the amazing amount of cleanup that's required on something like that, and to have it all prepared and ready for the teachers, so good job.
I'm pleased to say with the high hot weather we had today, everything worked exactly like it was supposed to. Can't say the same for the elementary, but we will have it figured out by tomorrow morning.
And also, the elementary build-outs for the intervention rooms look great, too. I haven't, so go there a couple of weeks ago and saw them pretty much complete at that point in time.
Yeah, those were, everything was cleaned up on those and done, so.
Well, you know, it looks good if you didn't even know that it was there, like, I think somebody wasn't familiar with the building, wouldn't go, what happened here? Or sometimes you see like, why did they do that there? I think it positioned itself well, and I think it'll meet the needs of everybody involved.
They look great.
Thank you.
Anything else on the area of focus? All right, thank you. Next is 7D, which is the Board Code of Conduct and Agreed Upon Norms Review. This is something under our governance and self-evaluation, we review every six months. So, and on this particular one, Kate had pointed out that it perhaps is not the same one that's on the district website, so we just want to compare a few of them and make sure.
Which one looks right?
Well, this is the same one that's in the agenda, that was in the agenda that we approved six months ago. I went back and compared the old agenda to this agenda, but what's on the website does not match those, but those two match.
So we'll get them to match, we'll get everything.
Which ones, which one am I matching to? The website version or the one that's in?
No, the one that we approved in the February agenda.
Okay.
And this does match the February agenda, but the February agenda and the August agenda do not match what's posted on the 202 website.
Okay.
So what you have in our packet agrees with what we approved in February, so.
What's in the packet is accurate, we just never updated the website.
We just need to make sure it's the same on the website.
Right here.
Good catch, Kate.
Thank you.
Did anybody have any changes or anything they want to elaborate on in the, or that we need to focus on? Okay, so as to not be redundant, because that's one of our board norms, we'll go on then. Okay, thank you. Next is the Freedom of Information request, and those were responded to timely. Public comment follow-up, we had none from the last meeting, we had no comment, and as our speaker said today, we will be meeting with her, which was the meeting before, so two meetings ago, tomorrow evening. And that brings us to 7G, which is the superintendent's report.
Me again? Listen to a variety of things in the superintendent's report, but just to kind of paraphrase, now that it's in the past, I can say, I think it was one of the best starts we had. I think that we worked really hard to make sure the eighth graders transitioned well to the high school. We had, I think, 90% of our students who were freshmen be part of that orientation and found success. I think, I always try and walk the halls at the junior high the first day, and there's that look of all the fifth graders coming, or sorry, sixth graders, you know, who were fifth graders, like trying to figure out their lockers and being nervous, but I think that all the orientation that was done was really positive. I think that the buses were exactly like we wanted them to be. As Dave mentioned earlier, Chartwell is the new food service, lots of excitement about the new offerings, little things that I didn't even think people had noticed, like changing the direction at the junior high for pickup and drop-off, people were like ecstatic about it. I'm like, if that's all it took. So I really think it was a great start to the year. Sports, a lot of students participated in the sports camps, but all the sports in general for the fall season are starting out great. So fully staffed, I think the students are in a great place. I think that couldn't have been a better start to the year, but you know, maybe now that I said it out loud, September might be a different report, but we'll take the wins when we can get them, and so we'll just keep moving on from here.
I'm glad to hear about the transition between the elementary and then the junior high to the high school, because that was, again, based on Vision 202 feedback from the parents two years ago, that need. The other thing I noticed was in the junior high, if you saw on their focus items, they were looking at the hallways for students and making sure, and that came out of Vision 202 this year. So it's good to see them following through and addressing those things.
Yeah, those are the blind spots that, why we have the conversations in the first place, and that one caught us off-guard, and so there's definitely a presence in the halls, or there was, but even more, knowing to try and find those students that look like, according to their eyes and behavior, maybe they're not in a good place. And so I saw a lot of positivity, I see a lot of the transitions in the hall, and I think we're off to a really great start.
Good, it's good to hear.
And my two food critics in my household have enjoyed their lunches.
Oh, good.
I mean, seriously, they did, we're like, this is nice, I like this.
Even the staff is talking about buying it now, so, boy, if you can convince the staff.
No kidding. Tough, tough group. Okay, thank you. This brings us to the committee reports. Facilities master planning did not meet, finance met earlier, and we addressed the agenda items. Okay, and policy, met this evening, too, and addressed those.
Yeah, we had, for policy, we went through five policies this evening, they're in the agenda, and then we'll have second reading next month.
Okay, and Vision 202 did not meet, and we heard about some future planning for that. Board representative reports under nine, home and school did not meet, ISB delegate to board, nothing's there, although we sent out a reminder.
Yeah, we do have the October 30th, the Fall 2024 Division Meeting, should have invites coming up with that more. Also, keep in mind the Joint Annual Conference, November 22nd through 24th. So I'm just going to get emails for registering for that, for being the ISB rep.
That email came out, just so you know.
Yeah, it did. I did, okay, yeah, I just saw the one that said, okay, I got it. Sign up to be the delegate, so.
One of the things that I was looking into was future self-evaluation sessions with our ISB rep, and I'll be talking with Arlena on August 28th to go through some of the suggestions that we had from our discussion, and then see what she thinks. So we set aside time for that, and then she'll talk about if there's been any updates to the other programs. Okay, intergovernmental did not meet. I was trying to think, I was going to write this down, but one thing, just as a kudos to the fire department, I know they achieved their re-accreditation again, and that's really a big project, but also that the fire chief, Keith Creston, was recognized as Illinois Fire Chief of the Year, so it's a nice, nice plus for Lisle to have him in charge. Len did not meet, I think we have September, that'll be upcoming, and Lisle Education Foundation, we approved one grant, and that was in the minutes discussed. Sessid, did you have anything on that, Steve, or not? Okay. And Dr. Filipiak, no? Okay. And agenda topics for future board meetings, anybody?
I think, not a topic to go back to the superintendent's report, I know that the Chicago Magazine came out, and we were ranked number three in DuPage County, lots of work by our administration and staff, certainly all goes into that. I think, follow that, I can't remember which Naperville School came next, but if you think about it, Lisle itself has two of the top five schools.
Thank you for pointing that out. It was in the superintendent's report, but it's definitely worth highlighting and mentioning on, at the meeting, and kudos to the staffs and administration and parents and students involved, so thank you, Dan, for bringing that up. Okay, anything else for future agenda items? We got a lot of topics coming back from what we know of the future topics. So that will bring us to item 11, and at this point, we, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, performance, discipline, compensation, or dismissal of employees in collective bargaining matters. May I have a motion?
Both.
Second.
Okay, so we have, okay, can I have a roll call, please? May I have a roll call?
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Mr. Lesniak?
Aye.
Ms. D. Domenico?
Aye.
Mr. Nickler?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson, aye? Ms. Alman?
Aye, thank you. We will adjourn to closed session at 8:51 PM. Thank you.